Good afternoon and welcome to the Board of County Commissioners February 8th, 2023, Comprehensive Plan Amendment Workshop. This time I'm going to ask the clerk for a roll call.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Cameron Sepeda. I'm sorry, I didn't hear a response. Commissioner Cohen?
Here.
Hagan?
Here.
Kemp?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Owen?
Here.
Wustel?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, this time we'll hand things over to Melissa Zornita for introduction and overview.
Hi, thank you so much, Commissioners. Melissa Zornita, Executive Director of the Hillsborough County City County Planning Commission. If I can ask HTV to go ahead and bring up the slides. And we can go ahead and advance it to the next one. Today, we're going to be talking more broadly than we have been with you all in some of our previous workshops where we talk about specific amendments. Today, we're going to be talking about the update of the future land use section of the comprehensive plan. So we'll start out with my giving a bit of an overview about the comprehensive plan and about our growth projections going forward. Then we'll turn to talking about some of our proposed goals for the update of this section of the comprehensive plan. And then about one specific concept that we would like input on, which is called Centers and Connections. And I just want to emphasize that there are a lot of components of the future land use section, and we're just going to sort of drill down and talk about one today and be back in front of you in future workshops to talk about some of the others. Next slide, please. So just a little bit about the comprehensive plan. In Florida statutes require that each local government adopt a comprehensive plan that guides decision-making for the next 20 years, and it sets the long-range policy direction for the community. It also ensures that other decisions are made in a coordinated fashion about land use, environmental protection, infrastructure, transportation, things of that nature. Zoning decisions have to be consistent with the comprehensive plan as well as the Land Development Code, but also other planning documents like, for those of you who sit on the TPO, the Long Range Transportation Plan has to be consistent with your comprehensive plan. And I say your comprehensive plan because while the Planning Commission is charged with maintaining and providing updates to the comprehensive plan, all of those come forward in the form of recommendations to you all. All of the decisions related to what goes into the comprehensive plan are ultimately decided by the Board of County Commissioners. And as we develop the comprehensive plan, we do so very much in concert with the various impacted county departments who are our partners in implementing the policies that are included in the plan. It is the best practice to update the comprehensive plan every seven to 10 years, and we have been working for the last couple of years on updates to different sections of the comprehensive plan. And now are at the point that we need to update the future land use section, which is the largest section and the one that you probably see and interact with the most through your land use meetings and the public hearings that we have on map amendments and things of that nature. We can go to the next slide. The comprehensive plan is organized in goals, objectives, and policies. That's how the state statute lays out that we should have it organized. The goals, which is where we're going to, for the most part, be talking today, are the long-range vision. They're articulating broadly the end that we want to achieve at the end of the next 20 to 30 years. The objectives are more specific and measurable and speak to steps that we're going to take to get there because we're not going to get all of this done tomorrow. It's going to take time. So we have specific steps that we're going to take to get there, and then the policies further provide detail about how those things should be carried out. Next slide, please. So the comprehensive plan provides an important framework for a number of other documents. The comprehensive plan provides that high-level guidance on issues of what type of density of residential development, how many homes per acre should be in a certain area, how much commercial development should be located somewhere, how should we maintain agriculture in our community. Those are just a couple of examples of the types of adopted policies that are in the plan today. And then the Land Development Code is the next level that further sets the rules and specifics on how that will be implemented. So things like the zoning districts and building setbacks, buffering and screening requirements to make sure that development are compatible, implement the policies that are laid out in the plan. And then further, there are technical manuals that provide engineering specifications on how something then goes forward and is built. But it all starts with the comprehensive plan. Next slide. The comprehensive plan's also implemented by a number of other county programs and processes, the capital improvement program being one of them, where how you invest in different infrastructure programs implements our overall vision for the community, their education and outreach programs that the county undertakes that further some of those goals and objectives. And then we also partner with a number of implementing agencies. Just this morning, I was talking with the port about how some of the policies might need to be modified to help further some of their goals. So that's an example of a partnership in your comprehensive plan to further the community's vision to maintain port activity. Next slide, please. So one of the important concepts in the adopted comprehensive plan is the urban service area, and it's been in place since the early 1990s as part of the future land use element. And this is a real tool to maximize the county's investment in infrastructure by focusing new growth and redevelopment in the areas where services exist or are planned. It also enables us to provide choices in our community. That's been a key tenet of the comprehensive plan over the last decades is that the community really wants to see there be options for what type of living they want, whether they want to live in a more rural environment, continue to have agriculture, or live in a more suburban, or even an urban setting. And by having areas where we're focusing growth and we're clearly delineating where that higher, those higher levels of growth are happening, it helps protect that those choices continue to be maintained. It also addresses things like compatibility between the uses because we know where some of the more intensive uses are going to be located and can plan for those impacts. Next slide, please. So now turning to look, going forward to the next 20 to 30 years, what kind of growth will we be anticipating and what does this mean for our planning? Next slide. So these are some recent projections that we've been working on with the State Bureau of Economic and Business Research that put our projected population by the year 2050 at just over 2 million people for all of Hillsborough County, inclusive of the cities, and us at just under 1.2 million jobs. So that's a lot of people. That's over a half a million people and over a quarter of a million more jobs that we need to find places for, and we need places for them to live, to shop, to work, and then we have to have ways for them to get around between all of those things. And that's what the future land use element sets the stage for, is what we envision for that going forward. We can move to the next slide. The, this breaks down what we anticipate that population growth, how we anticipate it occurring between the four local governments. So the Planning Commission does the long-range planning for all four jurisdictions, and so we're having these same discussions with each of them about how much growth is realistic in their plans, how their plans need to be updated to accommodate this. But the key takeaway here is that approximately 40% of this population growth is anticipated to come in unincorporated Hillsborough County, which, whether it all gets here by 2050 or not, long range, we need to be planning for where we have places for those people to live and work. And then in the next slide, we can see the distribution of the employment growth where because the city of Tampa has the three largest job centers of downtown West Shore and the university area, they have a little bit greater proportion of that employment increase, but there's still a significant amount of job growth that needs to be planned for for the unincorporated area. Next slide. So some of the things that we take a look at as we're preparing the plan are, we look at what the existing land uses are, where there's the opportunity for additional growth to go based on the land patterns. We understand what the policies are, and we get direction from policymakers such as yourselves. We look at where development activity is happening and what the trends are in that development activity. So something we've been looking at has been, what have been the impacts of COVID and the fact that we're all in different locations having this meeting as opposed to in county center, that's certainly a trend that might impact how we plan for jobs going forward. We look at demographic changes and things as detailed as household size and how that might be different in Wy Mama than it is in Sun City Center, and even though those two areas are right next to each other, that they have very different planning needs. Next slide. So one of the key pieces of information that we wanted to share as we look at going forward is how much land is available because that is a limited resource. And our finding was that there's a little over 52,000 acres available in the cities and in the urban service area that is either vacant and developable, meaning it is available to be built on, it doesn't have any environmental features on it that can constrain it, or that's redevelopable, meaning that it has certain indicators that tell us that the value of the land is more than the value of the building that's on it. So it might be getting ripe for those property owners to think about doing something different with it in the future. That's, that's a limited amount of land to put a lot of people on, and so we need to think about whether or not that is enough going forward. And if we move to the next slide, our recommendation is that while we certainly want to maximize what is in the urban service area and in the cities, we also need to pair that with a strategy that begins to look at and plan for outward expansion of the urban service area in some strategic areas. So we're looking at a balanced approach to growth going forward that continues to foster that idea of providing choices in our community so that we have some redevelopment and some intensification in current, in certain areas that would allow for those choices for people who want to live in a more urban or suburban environment, but also provide some areas of outward expansion along perhaps the I-4 corridor or around Plant City that allows for continued single-family development and some of the larger job centers that might not fit in a redevelopment scenario. We believe that looking at both is important as part of this update. Today, as we move through the presentation, we're going to focus on one strategy that looks at the first part of this, redevelopment and some areas where we might want to allow some intensification. But we will be back before you all to talk about the strategic outward expansion and implications on the rural area of that in the future. Next slide, please. With this, I think I'm going to turn it over to Melissa Leinhardt to cover the goals. Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Good to see you again. My name's Melissa Leinhardt. I'm with Planning Commission staff. I'm going to take you, or take over a little bit to talk about the update of the future land use element, which will become the future land use section to align with the previously updated sections of the comprehensive plan update. So currently, there is one adopted goal for over 700 policies in the future land use section. As you can see on the screen, the current goal is rather vague, considering the wide breadth of topics that are covered by the future land use section. And as part of the update, we have reorganized it to be more user-friendly. So like policies have been grouped together. For example, all the density bonuses will now be under one section. The goal is to make it easier for the public to find the policies that they're looking for. So all in all, we're proposing eight goals based on these reorganized topic areas to better articulate the policy direction. And today, we're seeking your feedback on these goals before moving forward with more detailed policy changes. Next slide, please. So the first two goals we have are under the subsection of Growth Management, and the first goal really focuses on concentrating growth in the urban service area, and then, as Melissa mentioned, some strategic expansion areas. And then Goal Two focuses on optimizing land use decisions so we can have an economic benefit, have fiscal sustainability, protect our natural resources, and then also maintain our viable agricultural. Next slide, please. Goal Three is under Community Context, and this one is focusing on land use decision-making considering the local context of areas, the impacts on disadvantaged and underserved communities, promoting cohesion between the new development that's proposed, as well as managing what's existing there in our communities today and already built, and then reinforcing that community identity. Next slide, please. The next three goals are under the Development Subsection. Goal Four focuses on providing opportunities for housing, jobs, and services so people have those options in close proximity to their home with a variety of mobility choices. Goal Five focuses strictly on our agricultural and our rural residential character and trying to support those, that use, so having a sustainable, thriving, and quality rural community. Next slide, please. And then Goal Six, which is again still under that Development Subsection, this one focuses on having a prosperous community, so increasing business and economic activity and improving our public health, safety, and welfare. Goal Seven is under the Balance with Natural Resources Subsection, and again, this is trying to strike that balance between the preservation of what we have naturally in our environment and then the built environment, so those buildings and, you know, the infrastructure that we're building with new development, and then providing an environment where people can naturally interact with each other and their community. Next slide, please. Goal Eight is under the Economic Development Subsection, and this one focuses on promoting employment and economic growth. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Katrina Corcoran, who's going to introduce us to a new development incentive proposed for the update.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Katrina Corcoran. I'm here to present the Centers and Connections concept along with Elizabeth Watkins. So what are Centers and Connections? This is a specific policy approach to implement proposed Goal Four, which is within the future land use section. You can also see proposed Goal Four reflected here. The Centers and Connections are all about expanding choices for living and getting around, and the intent here is to really streamline the comprehensive plan amendment process via an incentive-based bonus structure. And this would also provide choices. So we're looking at suburban environments that we have within the county and the urban service area, but allowing more of an urban context that residents, for residents that want it within those areas. Next slide, please. So how will this work? This would encourage growth in areas where communities desire it by allowing density and intensity bonuses in specific centers and corridors. This would be in line with adopted community plans within the urban service area. And density is the number of units developed on a piece of land. Residential density is measured by dwelling units per acre. So any proposed density bonus that we do put in with this policy approach would be an increment over existing density to remain appropriate for context and character of existing areas. Intensity measures development building size with floor area ratio, or FAR. That's measured by total square footage of a building on a site by the amount of site square footage. So an FAR bonus could encourage mixed use, service, and jobs near residential development. This concept would also expand housing opportunities that improve walkability in a sense of place and may have transit as an option. There's also the potential for these areas to be transfer development rates or TDR-receiving areas. Next slide, please. So we do have a draft map that we'd like to present to you today, but to give you some orientation to that map before you look at it, the connections that we have placed on this map show roads that either have an adopted roadway context designation that supports more walkability or future land use categories that already support the potential for higher density. Quarters within the coastal high hazard area are excluded, so the coastal high hazard area is an area particularly susceptible to the coastal flooding from storm events. And our comprehensive plan limits or restricts residential density within that area. So we're trying to be careful with not placing as many housing units in those areas that are very susceptible. So again, the quarters within the coastal high hazard area are excluded. There's a potential for density bonuses along most of these quarters with the exception of the coastal high hazard area. For the centers, those are major intersections in areas identified in community plans for redevelopment or walkability. They, you'll notice when you look at the centers that some of them are colored differently and they're a bit smaller. Those are centers within the coastal high hazard area or areas that are primarily single-family homes already. So the focus would be on walk-bike improvements rather than increased density. And for the, with the exception of the green centers that you'll see in the next slide, there's the potential for intensity and density bonuses within these centers. Next slide, please. Now, this slide shows you our overall map, and we will go through some zoomed-in slides to let you take a closer look. But just to orient you to this map, you'll see a legend on the right-hand side here. There are connections in blue lines. Those are the roadways that I just discussed. You'll also see the smaller green centers. Those are within the coastal high hazard area or primarily single-family homes, so areas surrounded by that. And the focus there would be bike-pet improvements. The larger blue centers are areas identified within the community plans and major intersections, and the idea there would be increased development via bonuses. And I would like to point out again, this is all within the urban service area, so you'll notice that darker blue line here. And we will also be reaching out to the communities if this is a concept that the board would like us to move forward with, to get further feedback on whether or not we have these in the right locations. So with that, I will pass this over to Elizabeth Watkins. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Katrina. Next slide, please. So like Katrina mentioned, we're going to go through a series of zoomed-in slides so you can get a better look at what we're proposing for the Centers and Connections. And just to call back a few things, the blue circles are the centers that were identified in community plans, and where we're proposing those could possibly have intensity and density bonuses, while the lines are those connections, we're envisioning those just being density bonuses. Next slide, please. So now we're zooming in on the eastern part of the county, Palm River and Brandon. Looks kind of similar to the northwest part, the clustering around these areas that the communities identified through their plans where they wanted more, where they envisioned to have that redevelopment and walkability. Next slide, please. So this zoomed-in areas of South County, you can probably notice that there aren't as many centers or connections here, and we think that's for a number of reasons. First of which, we really use the community plans as our guide in developing this, and some of those plans are a little bit older. So we intend to do some targeted outreach based on your direction today if it moves forward, to hear from South County residents and areas that we may have missed or that needed to be considered. Additionally, we acknowledge that the centers are, the green centers are in the coastal high hazard area, and we are not recommending that those have, you know, increased density or intensity given the vulnerability of those areas and that majority of the population in South County live there already. So again, just reiterating the need and our approach of doing targeted outreach to South County to make sure that we have appropriately incorporated their feedback. Next slide, please. This next set of slides is just a few illustrations on what this could possibly look like in different areas of the county. So this first example is looking at town and country where R6 is a predominant category. So an increase to 10 dwelling units per acre could look a little bit like this, still single-family in nature, sidewalks and bike-walk infrastructure to accommodate that development. Next slide, please. Here's an example from the university area, which is already one of the more dense areas of the unincorporated county, which has a number of multifamily units. So looking at an R20 example in the bottom left corner, on the right are some examples at 32 or 35 dwelling units per acre. So still similar, just a little bit denser. Next slide, please. Our last example is in Palm River. Here is a fair example of R9, again, primarily single-family house, housing. So an increase to either 14 or 15 dwelling units per acre could look something like this with duplexes or triplexes. Next slide, please, and then I'll hand it over to Melissa to wrap us up.
Thank you, Elizabeth. As it relates to this concept of the Centers and Connections, our next steps would be to engage with the community, to get their feedback on the maps and the concept, and then develop appropriate policy and code language that addresses your direction as well as the feedback we get from stakeholders. We can go to the next slide. As I mentioned at the beginning, that the concept of the Centers and Connections is just one of many topics that are addressed in the future land use section. And so we will need to be working with our agency partners and stakeholders on policy updates about the rural area, expansion of the urban service area, timing of growth, mixed use, there are numerous others. And as part of that, would be back in front of you all for additional workshops before we have a completed package of amendments covering all of those topics related to the update that we hope to bring forward in the summer and fall of this year. With that, that concludes our presentation. I thank you for your time and attention and welcome your feedback and questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the thorough presentation. I have one question. I'm sure there'll be some board comments. I know you said that next step's engaging the community and stakeholders. What's the approximate timeline? And I know you mentioned summer and fall. Was that to bring back specific recommendations or what, just what is the rough timeline?
Yeah. Great question. Over, we anticipate that we would be engaging with the stakeholders over the next couple of months so that by the summer, we would have a package of amendments to submit in the plan amendment hearing process. That would arrive at a Planning Commission public hearing in September typically and a board hearing in October. So the engagement will be in the next few months with the community.
Okay, great. Thank you. Commissioner Myers?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. I just have a couple of questions. One, when you were talking about the expansion of the service area, what areas are you looking at going outside of the service area? Because we know growth is constantly moving and heading down south. And so how would you look into address that and what areas you would be looking into for the expansion?
Yeah. Yes. Some of the areas that we know we need to plan for, for example, around the city of Plant City, they have quite a bit they have quite a bit of annexation plans. We've had a number of studies occur over the last decade or more of the I four corridor. And so I would anticipate that that would be a place to look at. We recently completed the Wy Mama and Baum studies, which do allow for some growth, though limited to two units per acre outside the urban service area. But your point is well taken that there's quite a bit of growth, particularly along our, our borders. Manatee County starting to have development right up to the county line. The Little Manatee South Community Plan area is one of the few adopted community plans in the rural area that contemplates a future where they might not be wholly rural. There are, but those are some of the things that we need to look at and discuss with the county departments and staff. What are the best directions to move forward? And perhaps what is the priority in terms of being able to plan for and provide infrastructure for those areas? Because if they come into the urban service area, there becomes an expectation that certain services might be able to be provided there.
And then my second question, we received an email regarding the One Water chapter as it relates to the comp plan. So I know at our last meeting, not last week, but we are looking to, we approve an agenda item on the sewer to septic. So if, if anyone who wishes to work with the developers can hook up and offer that service, could that be included in the comp plan? Or would you look at the One Water in that chapter to how individuals and the developer can make it happen and they don't have to use a septic tank?
Yes. I'm so glad you brought that up because I meant to mention it in some of my comments on the urban service area. So, so two things on, on that. One, within the urban service area, the county is investing quite a bit of, of money in conversion to, from septic to sewer in Gibsonton and Palm River. And we want to maximize that infrastructure investment by making sure that we have planned for the right level of development to, in those areas. But we've also had discussions for, with the Environmental Protection Commission ever since the One Water chapter was adopted about the need to look at allowing people to tap into existing sewer and water lines in the rural area. And because of the environmental impacts of septic tanks, kind of looking at those rules differently than we have in the past. Historically, a lot of the decisions about services also came with the expectation that there was going to be additional development in an area. And that's not necessarily true. You can have services and still have rural level development. And so I think through the update of the future land use element, we'll be able to better make that clear. And yes, I would anticipate that we would then revisit those sections of the One Water chapter related to allowing potentially more connections to water and sewer lines in the rural area.
So I would ask before this come back to us that you have the opportunity to get with EPC. And you all work together so that when it comes back to us, we'll be on one accord.
Okay. Great. Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Owen.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you for the presentation. When we say 52,000 acres, I think it's really important that we understand what that means. It doesn't mean where we can build residential property. I mean, a third of it's going to go to, you know, schools, roads, office commercials. So in essence, we're really probably talking about in the low 30,000s. And my math may be completely wrong on that. But, but I, I think that's an important perspective. And then obviously all of, the overwhelming majority is, is in the unincorporated east and south county. So I think that's one important thing to note. One question I had, you said the updates, they're encouraged to do every, is it seven years, you said?
Well, there's no longer, there used to be in state statute, a requirement that you update your comprehensive plan every five to seven years. In 2011, the legislature removed that requirement. And so now we have been operating based on best practice, which is that the plan still should be updated. And unfortunately, the county's plan has not been updated in, in a holistic way since 2008. But we are, we've made good progress and we're, we're nearing the finish line with this section.
Good, good, good. And as far as engaging stakeholders, particularly about moving the urban service area line, I know that's inevitable. It's got to happen. And I, I know I've mentioned to you, and I've said it in public, that I think there's a lot of natural resource and natural barriers that we have. And I actually looked at what you, you all did. It looks like you kind of used a lot of that with some of the farms and, and some of our rivers and lakes. And I just, I think there's a lot of natural resources we can use to, to move that back. Again, I'm not crazy about it, but it just seems inevitable that we have to do that. But are, are we engaging the agriculture community, Farm Bureau, for example? Are they being included in these discussions as well as the Plant City government? You know, I really think we're talking about major changes to agriculture and as well to Plant City, as you pointed out. I just want to make sure that we're engaging Farm Bureau and, and Plant City's government in particular.
Yes, absolutely. This, this is sort of our unofficial kickoff of the process and, and with you all. So from here, absolutely, we will engage with the, many of the agricultural stakeholders, the Farm Bureau, Strawberry Growers Association have been very involved in some of the other sections being updated. And we would absolutely engage with them. We also have planners who specifically work with Plant City. And so we will be talking very closely with them about their, the growth that they would like to see around Plant City.
Excellent, excellent. And, and I, I had on my list, Commissioner Myers, to discuss the exact issue that you brought up. So I'd like to put a stamp and an underline under what Commissioner Myers said because I got people, obviously, that, you know, that, that urban service area line ends in my district. And I've had some folks that have a commercial business that can't hook up and it's right next to them and they gotta spend an ungodly amount of money. And I, and I think the EPC environmentally, it's, it's, it's better for the environment. So I don't believe that that encourages sprawl. We still, at the end of the day, are the, are the gatekeepers of development. So I, I just think that what Commissioner Myers said is extremely important because, because I know that in the past few years, we've had some really tough situations with people in my district spending a lot of money. That's going to be probably harder on the environment later on and they're going to have to convert over. So I appreciate you, Commissioner Myers, bringing that up. And then on, on, on the goals, I mean, obviously I know goals are very broad. You know, it's, you know, you read the goals and they kind of just kind of catch all a lot of things. They're not too, too specific. You know, I guess the one thing I'd encourage is that we just understand that, that Hillsborough County is a big county and people migrate to certain portions of the county because they want to live a certain way. I, I know some other commissioners may disagree with me, but I believe the majority of the unincorporated part of Hillsborough County is not into connectivity and walkability, but they're into having good roads. They're into, they're into, they like to live in the suburbs and they don't mind getting in their cars and driving a mile down the road to a restaurant. They just want to have roads that, that are, that are, that are not substandard. So I almost think that there should almost be goals for different parts of the county because the desires of the electorate in, in different portions of the county are just so different. And I think that's what makes Hillsborough County so wonderful is that if you want to live a certain way, you can. And obviously me representing the unincorporated, the majority of the unincorporated part of the county and, and the agriculture, I want to preserve that agriculture as much of it as we can. And I want to preserve the ability for folks to have one, two, three acres, have some chickens and have a garden. I just think that, that that should be, and I think it is a goal, just looking at the goals, I think that is one of your goals. But I just want to really highlight that because I think that's very important. And you're right about the development coming from, from the north. I, I drove up to Parrish just to look at the development and they don't even have an exit off 75. And they're building like crazy up there. And it looks like that development is just going to, we're just going to meet in the middle somewhere. So I sure would like us to come up with a good plan. I appreciate staff and everybody working on this. And, and I promise you all, I'll work hard with you to try to, try to get this figured out. So thank you all. That's all I have.
Thanks, Commissioner Owen. Now Commissioner Kemp.
Thank you. I'll, I'll start with the comments about water and wastewater. One of the things about recognizing the urban service area is to recognize that we're trying to maximize the infrastructure that's already in place. Trying to, trying to use it. It is extraordinarily costly and getting costly by the minute. Literally by the minute now. And I'll just remind you, just Lithia Pinecrest Road, for instance, went from 40 million miles, 40 million dollars a mile, just to expand it to, you know, now it's upwards of 70, I think, about, and, and growing. So all of these investments we make in water and roads are extremely costly. Yes, everybody wants them. Everybody wants them. But, you know, they cost a lot of money and it's, it, it is too much even for the cost of, you know, we can't bear the cost right now and haven't been doing, we're 30 years behind infrastructure because we don't have building those costs. And even for the urban service area, that's where we have the development already in place. We don't have that. As to sewer and wastewater, there's 25,000 businesses, residents in the urban service area that also don't have access to water and wastewater sewer. And, and that's one of the reasons that areas like Gibsonton and Ruskin with low pressure sewer system, Wy Mama, Town and Country, the university area where they're putting lots of density, they cannot develop to the extent that we want because they have, and they could take the development and they, they have the opportunity, but they do not have the infrastructure in place. Many times either in roads, but also not in terms of, especially, and we don't even see it. It's, we, we don't really recognize it. But our sewer and wastewater system was, I think we got an estimate when we started focusing on this about five years ago, that in order to provide sewer and wastewater to what we have now and looking at the reasonable budget investment, we were 80 years of investment, 80 years of significant investment that we didn't know what we could possibly get. So because of the federal grants done under COVID, the various ones, and we focused on sewer and wastewater infrastructure in the urban service area, we made, I think, big leaps of investment that when I was in aid in 2004, I understood could never even be done. And, you know, they said it was just impossible and costly. So we have made significant gains and instead of being 80 years, maybe, maybe we've got 40. I'm not sure what the new update of that would be, but we have to understand that right now, just with the, just with the residents and businesses that we have in the urban service area. Apparently we are short for 25,000 units. And, and that's not considering that if we start to get more densities, which is that's what the sewer and wastewater systems allow for you to do, to focus that density in the urban service area. And so I, I'm going to say we really need to maximize our investment in these areas and we really need to focus on these areas because we don't have the money, the resources to go further out is the problem to, to service all the other areas. And once we move the urban service line, if we do, it becomes a cost for everyone in the county. And we don't even have the tax base right now to do, you know, what we need to do to keep even and certainly not to handle our past sins of not doing it. In terms of the, the acreage, yes, there's, you know, different things, schools, for instance. But we've, we've really had a policy, I think, you know, I see a lot of one-story schools. There's no reason to have one-story schools. If you look at the schools in the city that were built 100 years ago, they're not one-story even then. You know, we need to really tighten up and it makes it easier for kids to walk to school when the school isn't sprawling all over the place. And we have really judicious use of the facilities instead of wasting, wasting of space. And so there's, there's ways to do that. We've maximized these massive mall parking lots now. And, you know, they're no longer being used even on Black Friday. I mean, there's all kinds of areas we can look at in terms of infrastructure improvements, not use up as much space. But just, just for a little math exercise, if, if you, 52,866 acres in the urban service area. But let's say we just took 50,000 of them and I'm going to do it by residence just because it's a good way for people to think we can't know about the buildings and the other things. But if we did four dwelling units per an acre, which is very light in terms of what is in the urban service area. And you have 50,000 acres and four units, which is very conservative. You come up with 200,000 units in the urban service area possible. And if you have three people per unit, you come up with 600,000 people, which is more than the number that, you know, we need by 2050, just saying. And I know it's not including all these other things, but it's another way to think about it. And I just read the other day, I was reading about the Channel District in Tampa. And they had, and it kind of shocked me actually, but, and it was a proposal, not, I don't know that it goes anywhere. But anyway, they have entitlements to do 230 units per acre there. And I, what I just did for you was fast math on the four units per acre, but that doesn't, you know, we're doing a much more densities than that all over the place. So, you know, this, I think it would be, I think it's extremely wise not to be extremely conservative for fiscal reasons about how we push out and to be careful and thoughtful and to know that the, it is the cost of doing that. And not to be so, I, I, I find a little, I mean, it's very easy just to talk about this stuff if you don't think about the cost of sewer and wastewater, roads and other infrastructure. So I'm just going to put that out there. It's, it's extremely important and we're not getting that as part of this presentation. I'd like to, I'd like to, I think we really need to do that exercise at some time in the future and we've never done it. And I, I feel like we really need to do that to make this reality based.
Commissioner Cohen. I don't think your mic's on.
You're muted, Commissioner Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I apologize for that. On, along the same lines that Commissioner Kemp was just going, freshwater delivery is another element of infrastructure. And we really ought to put an overlay over whatever maps you're looking at showing the projects that Tampa Bay Water and Hillsborough County are doing right now to expand the freshwater delivery system and augment it in South County. Because whatever our policies are, are going to be, they ought to follow very closely along to where we're going to have water available. That's number one. Number two, when we look at the maps and see the entire, the entirety of the municipalities grayed out, I, I think it's important, it's very difficult to put into context what density is appropriate around particularly the city of Tampa when you don't see integrated into it, what's going on inside that area and what the projections are for how much of the population growth and how much of the housing is going to be absorbed inside of that area. And then the third thing I wanted to say is that I really think, given the timetable that you've outlined, that it's very important to really double down on the stakeholder input. Because in the past, what happens is we get to the end and then all of a sudden there's all kinds of last minute things that come up and it ends up adding a lot of time to the process. It would be very helpful, I think, particularly with the development community, with the agricultural community, with, you know, the various groups that are involved with the different community plans. Let's meet with them earlier rather than later so that we're not tripped up at the end when it comes time. it comes time to transmit this. So thank you.
Excellent points, Commissioner Cohen. Commissioner Wostel?
Thank you, Chair. Melissa, I'll just highlight some of the same points and concerns that I had in our briefing earlier this week, so the rest of the commissioners can hear them as. Well, first, I'll double underline what Commissioner Myers said. I think that that's absolutely right. Let's see if we can make that not mandatory, but an option to those folks that are close to the septic, the new infrastructure. And I think that Commissioner Owens has said precisely what I want to say, which is, I really think that there's an opportunity for everyone to get what they want in this situation. And where a lot of kind of the anchor comes from is that I've experienced, is that walkability does not need to exist throughout the entire county. But it does need to be recognized that it should likely exist in the dense urban areas where people would like to live the urban lifestyle lifestyles, which I have nothing against myself. But making sure that those delineations of the three categories, I had to, I've been like attacked at public I'm speaking events about this urban service area, that it's a mythological invisible line. I had to do some deep dive research to finally realize it's now 30 years old to the day, almost. It was established in 1993, to my understanding. Please correct me if I'm wrong. And I'm curious if it's been, if we, you know, make sure that this isn't one of those things where government created it, and it's never been realistically revisited in a whole scale way, to making sure that it is still a feasible tool, as it's referred to, or if the county has just naturally outgrown the usefulness of whatever it was originally told. I do want to be careful about the things that I spoke to before. It's no it's no mistake that oftentimes what we see in the future land use rezonings are that it's really dense apartments. And that's because, in my opinion, what we've done is while, yes, you have promoted some density through density bonuses, etc., I believe the unintended consequence, and why we only basically see those now, is because we have demoted single-family home options. And so if we're really going to focus on how we give these bonuses, while ripping down the urban service area line and down 301 and stacking tons of apartments down there where they meaningfully might not should not exist there, that maybe that those future that those density bonuses should exist, that the closer they're getting it to the urban areas, and allotting for more effective usage, as Commissioner Kemp said, of the existing infrastructure, to be more fiscally conscious, and promoting those single-family home commuters further out, which is where you're going to get households that, since they want to live in a single-family home, then they're naturally going to have a vehicle, which would make more sense for them to then be willing to commute further. So really promoting those in those external areas, and making sure that in our in our efforts to promote this density, that we're not basically just demoting single-family homes. And I I hope that I've articulated that where enough, where I do believe that there's just a really whole-scale view of this urban service area, whether it's real or not, I don't, it makes no difference to me, of us just making sure that we're promoting this density closer to the urban areas, the dense urban areas, and that we're not artificially demoting single-family homes externally.
Thank you.
I yield the floor.
I don't see anyone else in the queue. I just have a couple of comments I'll make. And I wonder, first of all, I think it was an excellent presentation from the Planning Commission. And I find myself in a position which is, I think, somewhat unusual in that I basically agree with comments from every everyone here. It was an excellent discussion. And personally, I don't think that what each commissioner is saying, that these ideas and thoughts, I don't think they're necessarily mutually exclusive. As, you know, Commissioner Owens stated, Commissioner Wostel, we're blessed to live in such a diverse county, in every demographic. And we offer lifestyles that are conducive for everyone, whether it's urban, walkable, livable, community, suburban, to rural. We are very, very blessed to have that. I agree with Commissioner Kemp and Commissioner Cohen, when you talk about that it is expensive to develop outside the urban service area. They do not have the infrastructure and services. They don't exist. So it's certainly going to be expensive to do that. But at the same time, I agree with other comments, you know, from this this non-planners perspective, that it appears that when you exclude the infrastructure and commercial that'll take place inside the urban service area, that Commissioner Owen stated that there likely not going to be enough vacant developed land. I recall, and Melissa, I don't know if you remember this, but it was probably three or four years ago, I asked you a question, and you said, and I'm paraphrasing, I have to go back and check the minutes, but you essentially said at that time, again, this is several years ago, before the massive growth that we've had since then, that we would be forced to drastically change our infill policies and/or expand the urban service area. And it was something to that degree, don't hold me to every single word, but you get the gist of what I'm saying. And so I think at the end of the day, I appreciated your comment. I don't know if I got it correctly, but it was essentially that you're recommending a balanced strategy to expand the urban service area in strategic areas. So I think this is something that that we certainly need to look at. We need to be smart about it, need to involve all the stakeholders and in community feedback. But I think if if we consider things in a strategic and a smart way, I think all of our thoughts and comments are not mutually exclusive. That's at least my non-planners perspective here. Any other comments from board members? You know, an excellent discussion. So the next time that this will come back in front of us, Melissa, you're thinking, was that summer? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I think we'll probably need to have another workshop to talk more specifically about some of the topics we didn't get as deep on, like the strategic expansion of the urban service area. And and then we would have the amendments come back in the summer. Yes.
Okay, well, I think, judging by the interest of every board member and the comments here, that that's certainly warranted. And I look forward to having that and doing a more of a deeper dive into into this issue. And just appreciate everyone's comments and the Planning Commission's work on this. So if no other comments, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.